To our second scheduled city council meeting in July. This is Tuesday, July 16th, 2013, and it is 6:30 exactly. I call this meeting to order, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna have Sandy read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, Sandy. And would you take role two for us?
Yep. Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczadzki.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Erica Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. Next then, we have the consent agenda. These are items that we are going to take one motion, one vote on. Are there any items that council members see on the consent agenda that they would like to be moved to the regular agenda? And reason for that would be then that we would discuss that and make a separate motion and vote on that separately? Anybody that'd like to see any items on the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A move to accept the consent agenda as printed on our agenda.
Motion by Keeland, seconded by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, then under the regular agenda, before we make a motion on that, Sandy had a couple items that were handed out tonight.
Under number five, Consent Agenda Letter A, number seven, preliminary concept drawings by MSA were distributed. Under number nine, Unfinished Business Letter A, a memo from John Edelbeck was distributed. And that's it.
Okay. Anything else? If not, then again, we take a motion, entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those two items. Some moved?
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, seconded by Hackett, that we approve the regular agenda with those two additional items. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay. All right, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a certificate of appreciation to Henry Velicker for his 15 years of service to the city. Henry, it's gone fast, huh? There's only a couple of us that were still here when Henry was hired, I think, but done a great job for us, Henry. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have a proclamation for Arts Appreciation Month. We know that the month of August, they will have the Arts on the Square, and this is a proclamation to discuss that the August has the Arts Appreciation Month. And I'll read it. Whereas the Waback community has a long history of volunteers coming together to promote arts and arts appreciation, from a few dedicated people working to provide artistic exposure to the community, our arts community has grown to include a very sizable artist community and many different arts organizations and arts-related business of all kinds. Whereas the arts are not only to provide entertainment, self-expression, community building, but also create environments that promote innovation, curiosity, ingenuity. Exposure to many different kinds of artistic expression stimulates the development of creative solutions to both the new and old challenges and a thinking outside the box mentality that is so vitally needed in today's world. Whereas the many different arts organizations and arts-related businesses in our area enhance our economy, bring in many tourist dollars, and make our community a more vital, robust, and dynamic place to live and visit, our active arts community is a wonderful human complement to the natural beauty for which we have long been known. Whereas it is more than appropriate to honor and celebrate our dynamic and thriving artistic community with the month of August as Arts Appreciation Month. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of City Waback, do hereby proclaim the month of August as Arts Appreciation Month. And that will be put on record for us. Okay, the next item we have is public input. This is set aside for any non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to five minutes or less. Anybody that would like to speak on a non-agenda item. If not, we'll move on to department announcements and reports, and we'll start again with our city treasurer, Jean Peterson.
There isn't anything new happening upstairs in the treasurer's office. We're just gonna get started on budgets, and I'll probably do budgets of smaller funds first that I don't need department input for. We'll start going out in about a month for everybody to count their numbers.
Thanks, Jean. Getting that time again this year. Okay, and next, we have library director, Peg Burgundy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. We have a lot going on at the library. It's our busiest time of year, and generally, July is our busiest month of the year. We've had a lot of visitors, and we certainly have an opportunity for people to come in out of the heat. Remember that we encourage you to visit our Story Walk at Swan Park, and it is a new story with the Berenstain Bears, so you may want to make sure you take advantage of that. We have over 400 kids and teens signed up for summer reading programs, and remember that this is an important thing to make sure that they don't lose any of that reading over the summer, the reading slump it's called. So we want to prevent that setback and make sure everybody's reading. In addition to the children's programs, we are offering an adult summer reading program, and it's called Explore Common Ground. It is based on the exhibit that will be starting next month, so it's based on the Native Cultures of Wisconsin exhibit. And there are four programs. In addition to that, people are encouraged to make a reading goal, and every week that they read that requirement, that they make their own goal, they can come in and have a chance at winning prizes or a free book. So that registration is open. It starts in August. We encourage all of our adults in the community to make a reading goal for themselves and make more time for reading. Our Common Ground exhibit, which is the Native Cultures of Wisconsin, starts August 12th. In our exhibit room, there are programs every week associated with the exhibit itself, and we have artifacts coming from all over the state. I think it'll be a finding exhibit, and I encourage you to attend during library hours. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Peg. Okay, and we have Brennan Kane, our development director.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. On the initiative side for economic development, I will say that as I've been here for about a month and a half, Henry has started to delegate some of his duties back to me, and we are starting the transition between Henry and John Edelbeck as well, some of the duties and responsibilities of, you know, my job responsibilities. I've started to meet with Henry and some of the business leaders in the community, along with local and state officials regarding economic development. There's some initiatives on here this evening that Henry will be talking about a little bit later, but looking to get some seminars set up and some training scheduled within the next couple of months for economic development. With that, you know, starting to look forward to later 2013, 2014, about setting up some action plans and strategic plans of how to move some of the economic initiatives forward based upon what the city council is looking for as a whole. So that'll be a process I will be embarking on probably within the coming months. Project base for right now, Midwest Air Supply located on Apple Tree Lane. I actually met with Wayne along with Henry this afternoon, or this morning. It looks like the applicant is actually looking to move forward with a larger proposal than what was previously planned, looking at about 100 by 200-foot cold storage building, about a 60 by 72, 72 square foot factory addition or workshop area, and some site improvements. So we're hoping to have that moving along within the next month to plan commission. It will require a rezone, as the applicant is looking for a larger sign out in the business park area. Working with Verizon Retail on their cell phone tower, that project had died for a little bit, but I received an email last week from the applicant. They're currently working with Waback County to actually, originally Verizon was looking to construct another tower. They're actually looking to work with the county to actually remove the existing one for the county that the county has and actually build them a new one and actually co-locate on there, so we're working on that project. A little bit later, you'll hear about two projects this evening, one being the East Gateway Sewer Extension. I'll hold off details on that until later, and then we also have an applicant that Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks. The applicant has two existing stores, one on 41 in Kekona and one in Lakewood. Applicant is looking to build within the East Gateway area along Runway Drive, third facility, so we'll be hearing about that project this evening. And Henry and I briefly met with the landowner for the Fall Gator Mill, very early proposal of possibilities of what he can and can't do with that project. He's looking about at doing a possible historical, I'll say, historical renovation of that building and possibly relocating it to a different place within the city. So that will be coming probably in 2014 as some ideas. On the planning and zoning side, as I continue to get more settled in here, definitely have noticed that there's some issues with the zoning code, there's some conflicts between different zoning districts, as I've determined, and we'll be looking to take an embarking on the zoning code rewrite. I'm looking at possibly working with outside, with the East Central Planning Commission or possibly looking at working with, maybe getting an intern from UW Oshkosh to assist in some of those matters in the research, so more information will be coming along with that. Also, as I get a little bit more settled, looking at the department as a whole, code enforcement is definitely one of the issues that we need to take care of a little bit more. And we have done a good job thus far as relates to mainly the grass cutting, but as I look around the city and have received some complaints from business owners and residents within the community, we'll be looking to bring up more enforcement within the city and looking at a way that we can be a little bit more efficient with our services between my department and all, along with Public Works. That is all.
Thanks, Brennan. Okay, let's go on to our director of Public Works, John Edelbeck.
Okay, to start out, State Street project, we're working with the county now who is building the pavement on State Street, and that's part of our jurisdictional transfer project. We expect in the heat tomorrow, asphalt paving, we got on the first layer of asphalt, putting out four inches, two inches of base course or binder asphalt, and then two inches of surface. So what we'll see then is whether proceeding tomorrow, asphalt on the pavement. We then will do some, we've lowered all the utilities so they can pave over the top of the manholes and the inlets and the valves. We will then come back, raise them back up to final surface course. We will be doing some black dirt work on the parkways. The city took on those responsibilities as we have other years instead of bidding it out. And we expect paving then probably the first week of August, so we'll be up and running, open about that by that date. Bailey Street was open a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully you've been able to use it and utilize it. We are gonna be pavement striping the bike lane out there, so I think it turned out very well. We're real happy with the results, and I think the property owners are as well. Our digester cover project, we have pre-construction meeting set for Monday morning. We'll be getting started on that. That's our wastewater treatment plant digester. As Brennan talked about, East Gate Sewer Project, we'll be talking more about that. Our department is involved in that as well. South Park Shelter Project is another aspect that our department has been involved in in identifying specifically what opportunities we have with our crews to do some of that work, and that's one thing we've been discussing a lot lately. We received our FAA license renewal for our Public Works radio system, which is important. We have some work on the Bowlby Lift Station behind Goodwill, the wastewater lift station, large lift station for us. We've got some pump work there, and we're doing some other pump work at the treatment Work with East Central on a couple of projects, New City Stormwater Ordinance, we've talked about this. This is obviously taking a little bit of time because it's a busy time for us now. Other than that, we did run water service into the airport storage building, the new building that went out in the airport. It has the patio with the picnic tables that you see that Pete has. He now can keep the floor clean, do some equipment maintenance out there with that water service. He'll blow it out in the winter, he'll not use it in the winter. As Brennan talked about, we've been working with John Lust on dead tree ordinance, something that hasn't really been addressed in the last few years here aggressively, and we're sending out letters to property owners identifying with dead trees. Our ordinance does allow for us to notify property owners that have dead trees on their private property. It is a health and safety issue. It's not just a health issue for spread of disease, but it's also a safety issue for that tree to fall. So most people that have a dead tree should know they do have to take care of it and cut it down and remove it. However, we are enforcing our ordinance and doing so, and we work with the property owner as to when is the best time to remove that tree. A few other developer, development assistance type meetings, meeting with their cleaning staff, talk about issues and concerns and ongoing operations. We'll be starting our five-year capital plan, putting together a five-year capital plan for all our departments. We're doing work on our sanitary sewer mains and storm sewer throughout the city. You might see our Vector truck doing main cleaning. Pavement striping, we're a little behind this year with the other work that we've had, but we're getting that done. And miscellaneous concrete pavement sidewalk work that we had a special assessment hearing on earlier in the year, that work is proceeding as well, so. I think it's important to note that our staff has taken on the construction inspection responsibilities and contract management for our street program, and I would venture to say this year alone on State Street and Bailey Street, I would think we probably saved about $10,000 in engineering fees by our staff, Roger, myself, and others taking on those responsibilities, managing the crews while they're there pouring concrete, working with their foreman, setting all that up. We do still contract out for survey, construction, staking, but that is, it is quite a bit of effort and some long nights for some of our staff, but we have better control and we get it done right the first time, and, but I just want to let you know that we are attempting to do the things that we can do to save the city money. That's a perfect example, and I want to thank our staff for doing that. As of June 30th, the 50% mark on the budget, our street department is at 46%. Water department is at 48%, and sewer division is at 34%. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, John. Okay, and Erin, Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm working currently with Josh Peterson, our parks supervisor, on creating an ADA plan, which is kind of a federally mandated plan that's supposed to be done by the end of this year for all parks and facilities within a park and rec department. A lot of, in talking with other directors, a lot of departments have been working with their insurance companies. I've contacted our insurance, EMC Insurance, and it sounds like that is something that they do not provide as of last year. So I think Josh and I will be taking that on probably starting beginning of August here. That is a plan that by law has to be put in place, and the corrections need to be made by 2015. In talking with other departments, as budgets are as they are, that's, I don't think that'll be the case for a lot of municipalities, so we'll get the plan in place and go from there. We are coming out with some new classes here. We have a nature activity class that just kicked off, a photography class, soccer just started again. It's about a 370-person program this year. Swimming lesson session two, T-ball is just wrapping up, and our Little League baseball and softball program have wrapped up this past weekend. Somehow got six days in a row for the tournament without any rain, so that was a plus and a change from June. We are, I'm currently having some talks with a couple volunteer groups from a couple different churches around town about bringing back an after-school program, just preliminary talks right now, and we kind of want to bring that back to the rec center and Peg, and I'll plan on talking to you and Sue about possibly working together. I know you guys have a pretty well-established program at the library as well, so don't want to compete there, but. Let's see, Friends of the Parks, in discussions, we, last year we did a lot of games at Lambo Field as a fundraiser. We worked a 15-person booth, made about $8,500 for Friends of the Parks doing that. I thought it was a great fundraiser to kind of get us on our feet here as we are a new group. We kind of talked and in gathering information from the rest of the group, I think it was, it got to be a lot of work for a lot of people, and I think it was the same people a lot. We had about, like I said, 15 people working 10 hours a day every weekend. Sometimes that got to be a Thursday night, sometimes it was a Monday night, people had to work the next day. So what our plan is, is to kind of hand that over to, try to keep it in the community, and there's a Cub Scouts group that is willing to do it, and then maybe we'll take two or three off of their hands, and then, you know, divide it up that way so we're not responsible for the eight regular season games, preseason, and playoffs. With that being said, we are gonna focus on Fallarama and the Little League Tournament as two big fundraisers. The Friends of the Parks helped out with this Little League Tournament, this, like I said, this six-day tournament this last week. We don't have the numbers in for how much we made yet, but I will make that available as soon as I get that. I did want to give an update on the school building. Rick Johnson and Randy O'Connell are having Ellis Stone come in and kind of work up some drawings on renovating the inside of the building to make it work for a health club setting that mainly involves shower, addition to the showers and bathroom area. I've seen the plans, it looks like it's gonna be a very, very nice upgrade, and that timeline right now is set to, they're set to be done in October, so construction will probably start anytime here in August. Let's see here, South Park Project, we're just kind of working to get that back on track, and I think we've done a great job, and I'll let Henry talk more to that. I think we still have a great project. As many of us know, we had to get it back into budget, and I think we've done that and still added a lot of pieces that weren't in the original concept, such as the playground. We have all the functionality that the shelter had in the original concept, and I think it's still gonna be an absolute great addition to the community, and I'll let Henry get into that more, but. And we're starting our capital plan here now that some of the summer stuff has calmed down. We'll get into that process, so. That's all, Mayor.
Your turn. Keith Coke.
Thank you, Mayor. My report is primarily informational. You see, two of the new officers are expected to complete their field training shortly. Our third officer that we had hired withdrew his candidacy, I guess if you will. He took a higher position within the agency that he was working, so that's kind of forced us to relook at our list and restart the process for that third position. Budget-wise, again, 50% of the fiscal year, we've expended about 46%, close to 47. As a reminder, for summertime activities, yesterday, we along with the fire department responded to a house in which three occupants were overcome by carbon monoxide poisoning, and very fortunate that we didn't have three fatalities. What happened is they put a charcoal grill in their garage the night before, and the carbon monoxide seeped into the apartment, and they were all overcome by the morning. They were completely incoherent by the time we arrived there, and the fire department went in with all their gear and respiratory equipment and was able to extract them, and they were all hospitalized. So just as a reminder, be very careful, that was a burning charcoal grill in their garage overnight. It doesn't take a lot. That's it.
Thanks, Chief. Henry?
Just a couple items for the council mayor. Think I've reported on this, but we have to go out to bid for our taxi service, and that process will begin very shortly. Have met with Vets Home, and I'm pleased to report that we are gonna be able to work out a contract where they're gonna fund probably $7,000, $8,000 more than they did last year. We looked at our service calls, and about 25% of our call volume is getting generated in the King area, so it's just not Vets Home, but it's people in that area. So we're looking to, you know, rework our agreement a little bit. What's gonna happen, just the way the timing works on this, just to give you a heads up, I'm gonna have to just put in the grant application with basically an assumption of a small increase. We get the bid process taken care of, and probably in November, we'll have the bids, and then the people, the folks at the state will just correct the grant application to reflect the bid amounts. I'm told to expect to get some multiple bidders on this contract. It's a five-year contract, so that'll move forward. Has been reported by some other departments, we're halfway through the budget, areas of my responsibility, I'm at about 42%. I wanted to ask the council to remind you that the budget process is gonna kick in. Our first effort is gonna be after the August 20th council meeting. We're gonna caucus to talk about the police contract, but our first date on the calendar is September 10th. That's the second Tuesday. And what Jean and I wanted to do is kind of give more of a global picture on kind of where the budget is, report on kind of the state budget impacts, and not spend a whole lot of time at that point, maybe 10, 15, 20 minutes max. But I was wondering if you would be open to having this economic development training session that I reported to you before on. It's about a two-hour training, and I thought maybe we could do that on that date since we're coming together anyways. And if that's acceptable, I just, I just need to get a date on the calendar and reach out to the folks that are gonna do the training so they can get it on their calendars. I'm hopeful that'll work for everybody.
Second Tuesday in September, the 10th? Don't see any no's. Okay, well, I'll proceed with that. And then my final item, our project team and the, wanted to give an update on the South Park Project. I did distribute some information this evening. The first page is just the original concept drawing. You know, this is our first effort out of the box. I think a lovely approach, a pretty, pretty significant structure. Unfortunately, it was a little extravagant for our budget, and a lot of it had to do with the complex roof system that this project was gonna require. And then as Erin mentioned, there were some elements that we might not have gotten into the project just because of our budget. I reported to you, we're probably $300,000 over on that. So what we ended up having to do is revisit two scenarios, actually. One was taking this original concept, shrinking it down, looking at a different way to tackle the roof system, and some other changes, but again, those refinements didn't get us where we needed to be on the budget. So what we've come to now is more of a, I guess, a symmetrical approach. You can kind of see the concept plan on page two. Page three is more of some elevations. I think a lot of the elements to the original design are still in there, like the metal roof, the brick for the service building which has bathrooms. Actually, the last page is a floor plan. We actually were able to add additional stalls in both the men's and women's bathroom. And again, I think this shelter is gonna be very functional. I think it's gonna still get us a very aesthetically pleasing project, and we believe that it's gonna be well within the budget. Now, there's some things we want to do with this project that will help ensure that we get it well within budget, and one is to act as the construction manager for the project or the general contractor, if you will. Like in a typical project, this would be designed, the whole package would be put out to bid, and a company like, you know, I don't, Myron, or, you know, a construction company would get the project and manage it and do the whole thing, all the elements. and manage it and do the whole thing, all the elements. We believe, given our experience with some of this kind of stuff in the past, that we can basically break this project up, and I'm not sure yet how many components, but maybe eight or ten bid packets, and get it, get bids, and then we will act as the general contractor. This will save, we're estimating fifty thousand dollars, so it's pretty significant. We believe that we can install the trust and do some of the roof work, and as well as there's some small water line work, a small piece of the water line. So, once we get all the bids in, we can kind of make the judgments about what we want to undertake. I think probably the, the real benefit of this approach as well is we've got a lot of local companies that have the capabilities to bid on multiple pieces of this, right? We'll have an electric, electrical piece, a plumbing piece, foundation, roof, site work, some other things. So I think we're really going to be able to bring this project in with, with that type of approach. Our plan is for the architect to continue doing final design documents, and we would be coming back to you on August sixth to get permission to bid the project, and then award the bid at your, your September seventeenth council meeting. Give us like five weeks to get the bids, pile them, and get ready to award the project. We would anticipate starting construction this fall. It does, with a little bit of this redesign, it did push off the final, about a month into June, I believe, next year. So, you know, with this redesign, we're going to have funds available to, you know, to do the playground. We're going to be able to have the money available to buy the furniture and fixtures. We even envision a nice flagpole donor recognition, and the really important element that we hope we can all accomplish is this alternate bid terrace. If you'll see this on the second page, I think that would be a really nice element to try to, to work into here. So the budget, in case you're curious, is somewhere around six hundred thousand, six hundred fifteen thousand if the council would choose to use some water revenue, some water fund money because there's a small water piece of this. We also have some park site fees that can be utilized towards this, and actually, depending on what all happens with bidding, if there were some other elements that we wanted to try to accomplish, we could probably find another fifty thousand dollars in some other sources of funds, but again, that needs to be worked through. Are there any questions? Change, I don't know, the team has anything they'd like to add? That's it? We're excited. It's been, we've been working hard on it. By the way, guys, charge your hours in this last couple meetings. Thank you. So far, in kind match.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. I'm glad that we're within budget and we're moving forward. That's great. Okay, let's move on to action items then, as we called it our Judiciary Committee. We have a license report number eleven eighty-one. This is a temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages for the fundraiser for the Opaaca Fire Department. They're calling it the Five Alarm Five K Run Walk, and it's going to be held at Swan Park on September seventh, two thousand thirteen, and they're looking for this from eight AM to two PM. I see that Mike Youngers is in the audience. Mike, do you have anything you want to add to this? Chief, have you had a chance to?
Well, the only thing I noticed is to get on this waiver, the state law doesn't allow that kind of a waiver that they're asking for. The only waiver that's permissible by state law is allowing minors on the promise of a special Class B. If they want to restrict it further to have an adult with them, that's up to them, but the specific waiver request is only to allow minors in the, the class, the special Class B. Otherwise, you'd have to be an adult, or you could be a minor with your parent or legal guardian. That's what would allow a minor on premise, but this waiver that they're asking for is not supported by statute, so I'm not exactly sure what they're looking for.
Mike, do you know, can you just step up to the podium, please? Sorry. We're, we're on TV and we're taping this also.
Mike Youngers, Opaaca Fire Department. Chief, I guess that's what we've always had on there. I guess we're looking, this is a, a walk run that adults and anybody can go in, and afterwards, if you are involved in the walk run, you get a, a free beverage, which soda water, and beer will be served, so.
Right, so you're, right, so you're asking for the waiver to allow minors into the fenced-in area? Because that's the only waiver that state statute allows. But what's on here is, we, we request a waiver to allow minors into the event accompanied by an adult.
Maybe that was written wrong.
That's just, that's what's on the application.
I guess we're asking that they can join in the, the run walk, and then afterwards be around to visit and have a soda or.
So can you help them with that, Chief?
Again, we can just change it in the clerk's office if that's, if the understanding is to allow minors on the, into the Class B area. We'll just change.
Right.
We'll just do it.
That's all you can allow would be minors. You can't condition it to include an adult. It would just be minors, yes or no?
I'll make a motion to approve license report number eleven eighty-one, subject to Chief Goke and the Fire Department figuring.
Second. Good. We have a motion by Shamble, second by Keeland, that we approve of a license report number eleven eighty-one for this new five K run that the Fire Department is going to have this year. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Good luck, Mike. Next then, we have our ordinance number zero seven one three two thousand thirteen. This is the ordinance amending municipal code of the City of Opaaca, dealing with meetings and attendant, quorum and attendants. This is to get us to the point, these next two, this ordinance plus the next one, to where we actually go from our committee level meetings to two council meetings per month. So both of these ordinances are on their second reading. We did have the first reading at, at our first meeting in July. I don't know if we have any discussion, anybody would like to make a, any discussion on it, or make a motion on, on approving these ordinances?
I'll make the motion that we approve both ordinance number zero seven dash thirteen and zero eight dash thirteen, amending municipal code and repealing a part of the municipal code.
Okay, we have a motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve of both ordinance number zero seven one three two thousand thirteen and ordinance number zero eight one three two thousand thirteen. Discussion.
Chief.
Well, I'm just going to say I'm going to vote against it only because I don't think it saves us time. It does maybe save going through things more than once for some of the people on the committees, but in most cases, it doesn't even save time there. And the other thing I wanted to ask about was provide, if this does go through, there was no thing on the agendas for use of the month if we have a use of the month.
Good. We'll make sure that gets on there. We'll do it probably just once a month, though. Yeah, okay. We could do that on the third, as we always have.
Yeah.
This does have us doing it at six o'clock, which I think was a compromise for everybody. Who else? Okay, again, so for everybody that understands, what we, what we're doing here, if you've approved this, is we are combining the, the Finance Committee, Public Works, Judiciary and Personnel into a regular council meeting, so there no longer will be those committees. The other committees are still, and commissions and boards are still out there. It's just these four that we talked about will be added, and we'll add that second meeting. So we'll be meeting the first and third Tuesday of each month as a regular city council meeting, and those meetings will be at six o'clock instead of the six thirty time that we started tonight. Okay? Everybody understand? All right, Sandy will call the rest.
Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
No.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Mio.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
No.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
No.
And Scott Pritchatsky.
No.
Five ayes, four noes, motion carried.
Okay. Don't think we had enough discussion for four no votes, you guys. I didn't, so if you want to make your comments, certainly send them to me so I can understand where we're at with this. All right? But again, the motion did carry, so we are going to the two meetings per month. Okay, number four, ordinance number zero nine one three two thousand thirteen. This is an ordinance under City of Opaaca Traffic Code. Parking prohibited in certain specific places. This is the first reading, and who's, who's this here?
I can take that.
John?
As you know, we're under reconstruction of State Street. The existing pavement prior to construction was kind of varying width. There's an actual right-of-way jog on state between Fulton and Opaaca, which causes some of that misalignment, and we made a, we did make some changes to the width, and to make it more uniform, it is thirty-two foot now back to back. And with that said, and with the traffic volume that we're looking at, we're recommending then to restrict parking along the west side of the property. We did have an informational meeting with the property owners last winter, late, late winter, and we brought this up. They understood it. We've talked to the property owners as well. Really didn't hear any objections to that. It would still allow for, thirty-two foot pavement would allow for two twelve-foot lanes and an eight-foot wide parking lane, which is standard. We have approximately five thousand vehicles per day on that road. It is still County Highway E, although K has been relocated off that alignment, but it's still County Highway E. So again, we're recommending that we do restrict parking along State Street from Mill Street to Badger Street, and the restrictions would be on the west side of State Street. That's the side where there are driveways presently. The east side of State Street does not have driveways, and it's more logical that vehicles would park on that side if they're visiting a home, not be able to pull in the driveway. So again, we didn't hear, I don't know if the absence of negative comments is good, but at our informational meeting, we did bring this up and did discuss the desire to do this. So this would be the first reading, our ordinance, tonight. If we wouldn't need action on this, Mayor, I don't believe, tonight, this would then go to the second, or I'm sorry, to the next council meeting for consideration.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? John? All right, so we'll see this on the regular agenda at our first meeting in August. Okay, under new business, we have a denial of a claim in the case of Robin A. Bailey for EMC Insurance Company, claim number nine seven four two nine seven. Henry?
Yes, sir. This is a more of an administrative item. We had a slip and fall in front of our Recreation Center, and our insurance company, you saw it in your packet, is recommending that we deny the claim. Procedurally, we need to do that within a hundred and twenty days. Sort of a normal course of business, so staff is recommending that you deny the claim.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion? Should I make that motion?
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Pritchatsky, that the council deny the claim in the case of Robin A. Bailey with our insurance carrier EMC Insurance Company, claim number nine seven four two nine seven. Any discussion?
So what's the next step, then?
Henry?
Pardon?
What's the next step if this?
Oh, well, I, I guess they'll, you know.
Henry, what this does is it shortens up the time that they have to file a lawsuit. If you don't do this formally and send a letter to them denying the claim, they have more time. In this case, it shortens it up to six months. They have to do something affirmatively, or, or settle this matter with the insurance company within a period of time. That's all it does. We don't know where it's going to come out if they start a lawsuit. It could be years after that before it's settled.
Are, are we seeking to deny, the staff want to deny this because of the amount that's being asked for, or?
Well, I, I think because on slip and falls, you know, we have a maintenance issue. If you look at the actual situation, we took pictures. I mean, I mean, you know, it's, it's not even itch, you know, so it's sort of like, you know, every sidewalk in the city is probably, you know, it's not exactly even, but we have a routine maintenance program. It's like when we get sewer backup claims. You know, if we can prove that we do routine maintenance and stuff, that helps in the defense of it.
Paul?
The question I have is, did, did we, there was, was there a memo to you admitting fault initially? Remember seeing that in the packet, and I can't put my finger on it right now, so. No, I don't know. I guess my question is, why was that done, why was that done, why was that letter sent to you, basically in support of your party from us?
That, that was just attached as information. You know, I, I don't have the authority officially to deny the claim. That's why it's in front of the council.
Not sure what you're talking about.
It's in the packet. I'm trying to find.
You're talking page one seventy-three, Paul? One seventy-three?
Yeah.
The letter from the attorney?
No.
Their attorney? They, it's a comment that.
Well, they filed a notice of claim. It's, yeah, one seventy-three. It's, it's to you from Aaron stating that the injury was a result of negligence of the city as well as the parks and recreation.
It was to both Henry and Aaron. It wasn't from Aaron.
Okay, to?
It was from the attorney.
Well, that's what they're asserting.
This is, this is, happens in every single claim. They, they file something like that. If they don't ever file the claim within a certain period of time, they can't bring an action against the city. So routinely, an attorney gets a case like this. Within a hundred and some days, they have to send this letter, which basically is a form to get their protection under those statutes. And once that happens, the cities always deny the claim because you don't know and don't have enough information at the time they file it to say yes or no. Then you let the insurance company figure it out, and that's where we're at.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other discussion? We're looking for a roll call vote here to deny this. Andy?
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mio.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett. Eric Olson.
Aye.
And Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, also under new business, Letter B, we have a proposed development agreement out on Runway Drive. Who's doing this one? Henry?
I guess I'll start. Well, we'll tag team it. I'd like to do, introduce Andy Schmidt, who's with Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks. In your packet is a memo with a draft development agreement. Andy is looking to build his third store in our community, and there's a lot of moving pieces here, but before we engage on any kind of site plan review, or you're going to see the next item, he wants to get access to public sewers as part of this project, we just kind of got to know where the council sits, maybe with the development agreement, if you'll support that. So that's why this is on the agenda first. Now, I, I've prepped Andy to maybe give you a couple-minute presentation, if that's in order, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. You got something to pass out? Okay.
Yeah, just to go back over, my name is Andy Schmidt. My brother and I own Schmidt Bolt Lifts and Docks, we're second generation. We actually, our family started and still have a farm equipment business, welding shop that we operate in Hollentown, Wisconsin, which is near Cocona. Well, probably 15, 16 years ago, we needed more room, we purchased land on Highway 41 in Cocona, we opened a showroom and sales there for the bolt lift and dock business. Probably about six years ago, we wanted to expand, we looked around, we purchased land on Highway 32 in Lakewood, opened a store up there. Things are going well there, we've been looking around. I think we considered about six different cities where we would want to locate another store, and settled on Opaquah. Looked around different lots, different sites, we've had quite a few discussions, talked to Alan Foot about a parcel that he had for sale. We have an accepted offer to purchase the land from him, contingent on a few things, one of them being city sewer going in for the project. We kind of looked at, knowing that that could be a significant expense to stick money in something with the county, just as temporary basis, and then not knowing if we're looking one year, two years, three years, 10 years down the road before city sewer goes in, there's already city water out there, but the city sewer, we just wanted to, an answer on that part of things before we proceeded on this project. So, the next thing I think I'm looking for is a little bit of clarification on the design of our building, the zoning. I know, at least I believe, we're looking at I-1 zoning currently, possibly changing to B-6 for the interchange district. I think we can make either one work. Of course, neither one has bolt lift and dock sales listed in the zoning, which is understandable. So, you know, you're going to have to give me the input as to whether you think it's a good fit, what we're proposing. We would like, I guess ideal for us is to open March 15. That's just after kind of the boat show season gets, gets going. It's when customers, the early customers start making their decisions, coming into the store, forming their ideas about what they want to do for spring. So, we're on the last thread of a timeline that could let us open in March 2014 here. So, that's kind of up to you guys. That's my preference, my brother's preference would be to open March 2014. If we're delayed too much longer, then we'll just have to reevaluate and see if, if we want to wait and do it March 2015, or how that would go. I guess, if it helps any, I don't know that we've had any problems at any of our stores. They are both townships, we're not in a city, but I guess we'd like to work with you and hope we can find common ground.
Yeah, I think the, all, you know, staff is still working with Andy on the design, and, and, you know, this is going to be agenda, I think, for the next plan commission meeting, assuming you're a supportive development agreement. There is a clause in here that if it doesn't get the city approvals in, or the sewer line isn't started by a certain date, that he would have the option of, you know, pulling from the agreement. I don't know if the council wants to discuss the details of the agreement, I tried to cover it in my memo. If you want me to go back over that?
Yep.
Operations out there would not be really manufacturing, some assemblies, which you've indicated.
Correct.
So not painting, I mean, the effluence that'd be going in there would not be abnormal?
Yeah, we, like at our Highway 41 location, we do a small amount of aluminum welding there, mostly customers that would bring parts in that need them fixed. It's nice if we can offer that. That wouldn't be until Phase 2, where we would be putting a warehouse behind the building, because we wouldn't want to do that in the main showroom area. Other than that, you know, you'd have a drill press and a saw and bench grinder there, more than likely. And I would say Phase 3, then, we probably would be looking at a little bit more aluminum welding. We'd also then be looking at fabricating. We do have our own line of docks. We don't do lifts, but docks and accessories mainly, but that's mostly drilling, screwing, bolting, more of assembly than, than hardcore manufacturing. And really, I don't think we do any painting at all. We do a lot of assembling of other brands of lifts, that we would be doing right away. You know, the assembly in the winter is what we try and do to keep all our top people on the crews busy, so that we don't have the turnover of laying everybody off in the winter. Yeah, we, we use a lot of, well, I shouldn't say a lot of, we use a couple college individuals to help us out. In the summer, we also use, we've got five different gentlemen that are retired, that assemble the bolt lifts during our busy time. So, I could see using that same pattern for Opaquah also, and that would be in addition to, you know, your sales staff in the showroom, and at Opaquah, I would say one or two foremen that would be running the crew for putting, putting stuff in and out. That answer your question?
All right. Basically, what we're talking about is this development agreement would pay for the cost of running sewer to his property, his share of the cost.
Yeah, and you're going to hear about how we allocated special assessments of, the law does allow by a square foot area, you know, an area basis. And, again, it has to be reasonable, and we felt that since he was driving the need to get sewer, that, you know, his project would pick up essentially a third of it. At this point, it's estimated at, what, $95,000, engineering and administration costs? So, yeah, essentially, I guess in a, in a way, our annual cash grant would pay your special assessment that's due for that year, if you chose to extend it out for the eight years.
We've, we've had discussions, and, and some of it is going to go into the zoning and the building and the grounds. So, to me, you can look at it from many different ways. Certainly, yes, it closely matches the sewer amount, which is probably way back when we talked to Alan, that's probably what we were looking at or thinking was reasonable. But we've got a lot of upgrades being in the east gateway that I think the city wants, the city is wise to put in there. You know, we've had talks that this is a chance, it's kind of the first one going in, it's going to be harder for you guys to hold somebody else to something later. In that line, I've said, I've told Henry, some of the things aren't going to sell one more bolt lift or dock for us. We want a nice-looking store. It's, it's in our best interest to have that. The customers we deal with cover a very broad spectrum. If any of you have been out on the lakes, you know, just look at the cottages. We've got all, all over the place, from ones that are small and quaint, to ones that are, mini mansions. So, you know, we deal with a lot of different people as our customer base. We need a nice-looking store.
So where are we, Brennan, as far as the building? You know, have you guys agreed to?
We had, we had a meeting last week with Andy, prior to scheduling this for the council meeting. I received some plans, I think, I believe, late last week, early this week, and we're currently going through that, you know, process, there may be some minor modifications that we're looking at, and some more detailed plans that need to be established, but for the most part, you know, after our initial meeting with Henry and Andy and myself last week, we agreed on mostly everything, and there's just some clarification, and I, again, that goes back to, I think, the conflicts between the zoning codes right now that we're trying to handle. That, the proposal does require, based upon his Phase 2 and Phase 3, that we have to rezone it to B-6 in order to allow the height of the detached structures out there. Otherwise, he wouldn't be allowed to do what he's looking to do for his second and third phase, which is actually part of the developer's agreement as well, which is contingent that he does build those two phases, and he's agreeing to that. So, for the most part, we're, we're just doing the, I'll say, the secondary review, and we'll be getting some information out to him tomorrow.
Good. So his timeline?
His timeline is, is still on track to have a, have a rezone public hearing next month. I don't have the schedule exactly in front of me, but it's the same schedule that we had handed out last week, it is online to, I believe, have approvals by early September. That's the rezone and the site plan approval.
I think our plan, Mayor and council, would be to get him that sewer by his opening date next year.
Okay, so, as you can see in Henry's memo, it does say that, that $30,000 is, amounts to about a 15% committed, commitment for the development, but as Brennan just said, he's agreed to a Phase 2 and Phase 3, so that percentage would be much lower if you take into consideration those two other phases, too. So we're probably closer to what our, our 10% development agreements that we've had recently and in the past. And I think we all agree that we would like to see sewer out there, instead of a septic, sooner or later, there's going to be sewer all the way out there anyways. So, if we can make this work at this time, it would make sense to be able to put the sewer in at the same time. I think it's a great project, I thank you for coming to Opaquah and looking out in our east gateway, we can, obviously, we can use some motivation in getting more development out there, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? So we'd be looking at the development agreement, anybody have any issues with that?
Are we voting on that right now?
Motion first. Yeah, we would need a motion.
Development agreement?
Yes.
And by doing so, that automatically means we're going to go with the sewer extension?
Well, that's a separate item, you'd have to...
Vote on? Because I'm...
Well, I think what you got to decide on that piece is whether you want to have a public hearing, when you want that, and then we could get the ball rolling on that, because John's getting proposals.
Yeah, I mean, there's some landowners that, one in particular, that's going to take monumental hit on a full assessment, and I think that really should be considered. I know we need sewer, but there'll definitely be some people that are going to want to talk about that.
That's why they have a public hearing.
I would move that we interneut a development agreement with Schmidt Bolt Lifts and Docks.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayo, second by Keeland, that we approve of the development agreement between the City of Opaquah and Schmidt's Bolt Lifts and Docks, as the agreement is written in your packet. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I just learned today, we did have a blank in here, and I needed something for the agenda, and Andy did inform me, they do have an LLC that's registered, and it's Walter Vincent Leasing LLC. It would be the, the name of the entity that agreement would actually be with.
Okay, so it's Walter Vincent?
Vincent Leasing LLC.
LLC. Paul, you're okay with that? Alan, you okay with the changing of that? Any other discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Keep working towards your goal. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have a proposed east gateway sewer extension project, and this is just information and to get across from our city staff to set up the special assessment process. Henry, you want to?
Yes, as you've heard already, to Andy's credit, he very much wants to be on the public sewer, and John has worked with our consulting engineers to kind of come up with an alignment, it's on your last page. It's actually, I think, it's overland, it's a unique approach to serving not only Mr. Schmidt's project, but we can open up about another 22, 23 acres for development. Now, you know, in Wisconsin, we have a special assessment process available to us, and you can see in the memo, there's certain things we have to do, and one of them is to hold a public hearing. Now, I can tell you, staff has had two different meetings with the people affected by these property owners. There's two that were not in attendance, Casperick and Van Lannan, but we've reached out to them subsequent. So, people that are affected by this have been fully aware of what's going on, and admittedly, I know some are probably concerned about the assessment, but I don't know that you have to discuss a lot about that tonight, it's, they will have their ability to come before you and state their case, and it's just really up to you how you want to proceed. Do you want to get that input before we start the project, or do you want to do it afterwards? That's entirely, you know, something that's in your purview as we set the schedule up.
When you say project, you're talking about starting the sewer?
Sewer extension, yeah. And if you, assuming you're going to move forward with this, it would set the things in motion for John to bring forward engineering contract and get going on all that. When you have the public hearing in the front end, we're going to work off this estimated number. You do it at the tail end, we have the benefit of actually having the project behind us, and we actually know all the cost. So, that doesn't prevent you, if you have the public hearing in the front end, when we finalize it, you can assess on the final cost, but everyone that's affected to this point is aware of the estimated cost of the $95,000 and how it would be apportioned.
So you, in effect, sort of had a public hearing, so to speak?
Well, no, we've just out of courtesy met with them, and just, you know, we, we reached out to them.
I'm interested what... I'm interested what one in particular had to say, the seventeen acres. I mean, that's...
Well, I don't wanna, I wanna speak for him, but I think after he came around the realization, because he is in the realty business, right now, that land is worth so much, it's, you know, it's not sewored. Once it's sewored, the price of that property goes up. And I think he gets that, it's just the carrying cost of, you know...
Well, let's, we're gonna go into, we're gonna have a public hearing anyways, either at the beginning or the end, we can certainly hear from him on how he wants to, he'll have time to think about it. I think that was good that you guys reached out to him. There's no doubt that this benefits the city, but it also benefits the property owners. We've, the projects, what we've done out in that area has been to not only enhance the city, but it's also to enhance the property owners. And we have to take, keep that in mind. That's our job to make sure that we keep moving forward with the best project we can.
How do special assessments get paid? Is it lump sum or is it spread out over some period of time?
Yes.
Both?
Yeah. We bill them, Alan.
Okay.
And on this project, actually, if it gets completed next year, that special assessment will go out in December of 2014. And it's collected, they get an opportunity to pay the lump sum. Or in our ordinance, we spread it out over eight years. Now, let's say on that big land, larger parcel, if he sells it two years down the road, that special assessment will be paid off as part of the property transfer.
Is there interest on if they go eight years?
Yeah, it's five percent, which is...
There's no doubt that if we do this project, if we do the sewer project out here and we do not special assess, the sewer department cannot afford, sewer cannot afford to pay that. So we would have to increase our rates to all of our services, yeah, to pay for that. And who benefits the most from it? So, I mean, this is why we're having this public hearing, to decide which works best for us.
Now, another question, if everyone out there decides to go eight years, we have to front that money anyway to pay the bill, so that still will affect, it could affect our sewer fund? Because we won't get all the money back, right away?
Well, we would have to borrow money.
Borrow money, right, okay.
To do it. But we are getting, we are getting five percent on our money and we should be able to borrow money at less than five percent.
I think Mayor Ashley Staff thinks we think the water fund could probably advance the money. We can look at that when it gets closer.
Actually, the water fund could take care of this project and collect assessments themselves.
Right, and they would just go into the one...
Have to even advance just assessments for the water, even though it's sewer.
Good. All right, so what are you looking for here, Andy?
Mayor, I need direction from the council. Public hearing before we start or public hearing after?
I sat and listened to the argument, the pros of both, of John and Henry, so I don't know if you guys want to hear that?
We had a difference of opinion.
So.
First time.
Henry, your development agreement with Mr. Schmidt says that it's contingent on that assessment. So you're publicly, you pass the assessment anyhow? Or do you have a public hearing first and decide not to have the assessment because all the people are up in arms about it?
Well, I...
So if you wait till later, he's sitting out there, and then all of a sudden, your deals fell apart and he's got a building.
Well...
So you almost have to do it first to see if you're really gonna do the assessment, don't you?
Well, I think that's one of the arguments, to do it ahead of time, not so much...
Well, I mean, otherwise, you're leaving Mr. Schmidt without knowing if his contingency has been met and he can't go ahead with his project. At least, that's the way I read it.
Well, that's a good point. I think we were thinking too, you know, the perception of just doing a project and then asking people later. I mean, get, you know, let them get their voices heard before...
What you're saying today is, is we're gonna bill them no matter what because we can't afford it. So there's gonna be an assessment. Well, you better go first, see if you're gonna do the project, if that's the attitude you're taking. At least, that's my look at the development agreement. Better know that's going in, so that development agreement is solid and he can proceed. Because he can't proceed until that public hearing's been held. Right?
No, he could proceed. The public hearing could be held at the end.
And but then the city would cough it up and then there wouldn't be an assessment?
Well, conceivably, the council could say no assessments, but Mr., you know, Schmidt's already agreed to pay a third.
If there is one.
Right.
Well, I'm just saying.
That's what I'm saying. And one advantage of doing...
John, are you saying that if we decide not to assess the other people, we cannot assess Mr. Schmidt?
No, 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 no. His isn't an assessment, his is just a deal.
Okay. So he's gonna pay for that either way?
Right. He's gonna pay that.
It's like the airport, right? When we did the water line, they agreed to pick up half the cost of that water line and we assessed the other fifty percent on it. Similar.
So you're gonna pass the project, which is the contingency, you don't know how it's gonna get paid, tell you have a public hearing. It's either gonna be an assessment or the city's gonna pay for it.
So you're suggesting that we have it upfront?
Get it all out of the way.
The city doesn't want to pay for it, have it upfront and decide who's gonna pay for it and be done with it, yeah. Still won't get paid until the following year. At least, you're gonna know. And if there's enough contention and you don't go through with the project, then Mr. Schmidt calls now, not later.
I agree with Attorney.
And you have time to have that hearing?
Oh, sure.
And decide so that he knows where he's going. Right?
Requires a Class One notice. I mean, we could do it at the August sixth date. Yep. And then we'd pass the intent to, the initial resolution, passing the intent to levy special assessments and that'd be on your agenda. So it's not a problem to schedule it.
Okay. So if we decide to do this upfront, do we, are we okay with that, Council?
Should we have a vote or just a consensus should be fine?
The initial?
Public hearing, yeah.
That doesn't take a first and a second reading, that's not an ordinance change.
It's a resolution.
So we could vote on it that night?
Yes, sir.
So decide.
Yep.
At the very least, we...
I mean, that's what you want to know.
Well, right.
Absolutely.
I need, I need to break ground.
Right, yep.
Get the concrete, frame it up, finish it over. And hook it up, March fourteenth, if we have to. You know, I know, best case, we were looking at best case January first. Probably not gonna be that, but that's okay. Pass that.
Okay, so by having the public hearing, we're going to be able to listen to the people that are involved in this and what it's gonna cost them to do that. We could still decide after that August sixth meeting, if we decide not to bill those property owners and we just decide to pay for it, and, which would mean that we're basically assessing all taxpayers for that. But we could, we could still do that. But I don't think we need to make that decision tonight. I think we certainly should listen to the public hearing and see where they're at, the property owners are, before we decide on it. So anybody not in agreement with having a public hearing at the August sixth meeting? Now, that would have to be at probably five thirty, huh?
How much time do you need?
I don't know.
Well, you know, I have a few comments. Probably plan twenty minutes, half hour.
So let's do five thirty.
Okay.
Okay, anybody? All right with that? I don't think we need a motion for that, but we'll just see it. All right, thank you. Let's move on then to the, I think John Idlebeck has a presentation on the proposed public works facility project. Can I get the screen there?
Okay, what I wanted to do tonight is present to, in a public forum, our proposed city of Opaaca Public Works and Parks Facility. This is set up for tonight's meeting. I just want to walk you through just a brief history of kinda where we've been and where we're at right now. And just to bring everybody up to speed. I won't, I won't get into depth in some of these items and I'll be handing out some information to the press here afterwards, some additional information. But this really all started back in nineteen ninety-nine. A city facility needs study recommendation was completed by McMahon Associates. And going back before that, in the early nineties, twenty years ago, the city hall was constructed. So that really kinda got the ball rolling for city facilities. So in nineteen ninety-nine, the city council contracted with McMahon Associates and they did a city facility needs study. And that study looked at all of the existing city facilities as it sounds. And specifically referring to, at that time, really, the police department, youth needs and public works. And regarding police, renovation was recommended. They looked at demolishing the old Armory Gym and expand the police department. And as you know, that did take place. Armory was utilized with expansion of the police station. It also identified youth needs because of the police department would expand into the Armory. Youth and community recreation programming underway in this building will need to be moved. The committee feels that the Hendrickson Center site is an ideal site for that. And as you're aware, that did happen. That was addressed, the youth, the city moved into the old Hendrickson Building. And the last element of the space needs study or the facility needs study in the McMahon report identified public works. And currently, in this was identified, currently, the public works department is working out of four different buildings at four locations. And with adding the Parks Facility to that, actually, a fifth building and a fifth location. And it goes on to analyze and look at those different locations. All of these buildings are too small to serve the needs of which they are being used. Most have little or no storage yard, some are short on parking. There are no separated shops for woodworking, metalworking, painting. I mean, it's all done in garage space. Most have a single large space where all operations, including vehicle parking, are performed and vehicles must actually be moved out of the building to provide workshop area. So this was back in ninety-nine and this was, again, their evaluation of space needs specifically for public works. They talk about the field operation of the department is very inefficient, working out of these locations. Time is wasted running from building to building to pick up required vehicles, equipment, materials. Kinda goes on and on and I'll pass this out back, the copy of, a portion of this report that deals specifically with public works. So that got, kinda got the ball rolling. And then the mayor identified a facility ad hoc committee. And in two thousand, there were recommendations generated by the ad hoc committee. And again, it followed the analyzing the McMahon study and identified, again, these three facilities since city hall was, had been built in his new city hall library. Identified police department, youth needs and public works. Again, it talked about consolidating five buildings and specifically that. And again, those were discussed. So with that and city council concurring on that ad hoc committee, the city partook in, as you know, the police modification, police department modifications and the youth recreation modifications, leaving public works as the only operating facility left to really address. So again, over the last twenty years, the city has taken a methodical approach to our facility needs and addressed those over a twenty-year period. However, we still have public works facilities that are in need of substantial improvements. We've done condition reports and we updated it in 2013 for our existing public works buildings and I'll just kinda be brief. And our Parks Department facilities. But of the five buildings that I referred to, public works and parks, the average age of those facilities are sixty-three years old. We have, some of our facilities are over a hundred years old. The Churchill Street Foundation is identified either between a hundred and a hundred and fifty years old, actually, by one of these studies. You know, I can kinda go on and again, I'll give you this information, but needs in the Churchill Street, there's a substantial foundation due to the age, stabilization needed, windows, doors, roof insulation, HVAC, plumbing. And then needs addition of a number of items that are lacking in there. And very difficult to operate out of that building, once you leave the garage doors, you're right into traffic. We have done some building lighting update and roof rehabilitation. The O'Bourn Street Garage is one of our newer buildings, that's twenty-five years old. It does need some replacing. The garage doors are very narrow, literally inches on either side of our plows to get in and out. And that's being operated all hours of the day and night after hours of use. And I give the guys a lot of credit. I don't think I could be backing those vehicles in and out. And they do back the plows in, believe it or not. Fuel tanks, our hoist is in rough shape. Ceiling lights. We're in need of a parts room, an alarm system. Brake room is on the second floor, up a set of stairs, a wash, don't have a wash bay. Salt and sand storage is utilized, utilized in the county facility. That's at, again, another location where we obtain our salt and sand for snow removal and winter protection. Lack of, our larger trucks cannot be serviced in that building. Our mechanic cannot service our large trucks due to the lack of large truck hoist. So even with what we have there, it's very limited. Harding Street Garage, this is our water department behind Neville Motors. It's approximately fifty-five years old. We obtained this, we obtained Churchill Street, I believe, for one dollar, if I'm correct, from Pepsi a number of years ago. We obtained the Harding Street Garage from the street, or from the school district, that was a bus garage at one point. Steel frame, sheet metal building, roof building, sheet metal roof, approximately fifty-five years old. The sheet metal siding is in substantial decay. Roof leaks substantial, both in the office and the garage area. We have heating elements that need replacement and additional insulation. There's no air compressor, additional spaces needed, no backup power. Site drainage is a major problem during kinda water event, rain event, we get flooding in the building and in the office area as well. Water Street Garage, this is on the end of Main Street. That building is approximately ninety-five years old. It's in need of heating system replacements. Wall and roof insulation is negligent, there is none. Wiring, again, this is an old building, windows and doors. There is no sanitary service to the building at all. The water line is blown out, not used in the winter at all. We do our sign storage. If you've been in the building, many of you have toured, the aldermen have toured the building. If you see the garage doors that are open, all the signs are on the wall that we utilize, but we have no place to work on the signs. There's no sign shop, there's no opportunity to work with that. The building lighting was updated three years ago with focus on energy. We have put a new roof in since I've been here, so in the last seventeen years, there has been a roof replacement on that building. As some of these other buildings, we have had to do some roof maintenance. And then lastly, the Michigan Street Garage. This is a concrete block building approximately seventy-five years old. Park and Rec utilizes it. This is a concrete block building approximately 75 years old. Park and Rec utilizes it for summer employees and operations. And if you've been in there, I don't think you could place one more shovel in that building. It's pretty substantial how packed it is. Jack, your son probably, a couple of sons worked in there, I would think, so. Heating system, wiring, electrical system is substandard. Wall and roof insulation, again, doors and lighting. Those are need a replacement. There's a substantial number of additions needed. Bathroom facilities. Equipment storage, no backup generator. Very difficult to move vehicles around in there. It's basically a garage. We're operating out of a garage with an active used garage that stores vehicles. And again, that's remote from other staff as well. The park superintendent parks in one building and they check in another building. It's kind of how our operation runs. So that's a condition report. It's obviously, again, average age, facility age of 63 years old. With that comes a lot of challenges and a lot of costs that are, we need to address. So then, the, sorry. The city entered into discussions with the county highway department on a possible joint facility study. And this was done because the county had made some comments that with their very old building as well, that there might be some consideration to do a joint facility. So we did contract with a firm and we did a joint facility study, feasibility study. And with that study, it identified cost savings, it identified square footage, it was a space needs. And it identified that there were potential savings in doing a joint facility. What joint means, there's a lot of different variations of that, but the feasibility study did identify that. Since then, last fall, the county has contacted the city and the council will remember this. They decided not to pursue any additional feasibility studies, joint facility studies, I should say. They don't feel that they have any commitment in the next 10 years and no commitment after that or a new facility beyond what they have presently. So that's a decision that the highway commission has made. So the city then, on our end, we continue to look at what our options were for public works facility. So we did become aware of a vacant building in the industrial park. And we brought that to city council to start to investigate it. See a Finia building on the corner of Royalton and Went. This was a, used to be called Dana Brake Parts. And it's a building that finished brake parts for the, from the foundry. So the foundry would generate the brake part. It would be rough, not machined to the final point where it needed to be sold. And they did, it was actually a very nice facility, construction in 2000 with, an operating facility. They then did relocate that, the operations to another site. And that building now is up for sale and is vacant. So the city council worked with Keller Builders to study that building and to see if it's feasible for us to consider a remodeling or a reuse or an expansion of that building for public works. So a space needs study was done and the Keller study was pretty economical. The space needs identified, basically very similar what we did on the feasibility study. And we had our staff very involved, park staff, public works staff, very involved in all of these, actually, all of these processes to get to this point. So the existing vacant building was evaluated. Addition of the existing building and then preliminary remodel plans and estimates have been put together for the Keller facility. I'm sorry, the Finia facility by Keller. And with Keller, we're also able to have them cost compare that to a remodel versus new construction. That's something that we're still working on, but basically in rough numbers, it looks like a new, our new construction for a new public works facility, and this includes salt storage, outdoor gravel storage, sand, fueling systems, backup generators, basically what would be routine for a typical public works facility would run about $6 million. With the cost comparison of the Finia building, we may be closer to $5 million if we're able to acquire the building and remodel it. Those are rough numbers, but it just gives us some comparison that there is some opportunity to possibly save some money with the Finia building. If we were to remodel it, purchase and remodel that building. So again, we don't own that building and we don't, we're in the process of discussing it with the owner. But that's kind of where we're heading. It's definitely an opportunity, I see a very unique opportunity for the city to consider actually looking at an existing building. And then lastly, just want a few more things to wrap up here, but lastly, we've been spending some time with our city budget model, specifically expenses, capital expenses that are upcoming in the next several years. Obviously, the public works facility is one that we're looking at. We're trying to put in our budget model a downtown Main Street project. Again, those numbers are very preliminary, but we do have some numbers in there. Some minor rehabilitation of this building after 20 years of operation. And then our annual ongoing capital items, including road rehabilitation, some capital items for police, other departments, parks. So the budget model is trying to address not just a public works facility, how we fund that, but it's trying to address as well other upcoming capital items that we see on the horizon. Brad will be giving a short presentation on it. So I'll just try to wrap up here as an executive summary. Public Works Department, along with Parks Maintenance Department, currently operate out of five buildings located throughout the central and east side of the city. The average age of those building is 63 years old with some over 100. There are substantial problems with these existing buildings, as we would expect. Structural failures, roof leaks, wiring, plumbing, garage door width, building height limitations, drainage, heating. Operations are very inefficient utilizing these buildings. The need to address the public works facility were raised in the initial facility study by McMahon and then confirmed by the ad hoc study group and the city council in 2000. And over the past 20 years, as I said, the city really has kind of moved forward and addressed these, all of our city facilities and with the remaining operational city facilities of public works and parks maintenance. We do identify that there may be some value in selling these existing city facilities if we do either go into a new or remodeled public works facility. However, we don't anticipate there's going to be large dollar amounts. They're old buildings, but there may be some value. If we do proceed with the remodeled Finia building, again, approximately $5 million, and these are rough numbers. Existing Finia building is, material is of good quality. The walls are made of precast concrete panels with vertical windows. The insulation factor is good for the Finia building, again, built in 2000. Property taxes no longer, however, be collected on this property. The Finia property pays approximately $39,000. The property taxes pay about $39,000, $40,000 in property taxes and that is deposited in the TIF 3 accounts. So that is something that is, is out there that is legitimate. It is estimated that approximately $1,000 could be saved if we were to proceed with this. And again, Keller has done a pretty detailed analysis of this and it's, again, that's the ballpark. The mill, pardon me? Yeah, $1 million, I'm sorry. The mill rate for capital would not need to be raised to fund this proposed public works facility along with the other items that we talked about. And Brad will be talking a little bit about that. How that would look at, how our overall picture would look at a debt restructuring, or I'm sorry, how debt payments would be made with our existing payments. And again, addressing these other items that are substantial that we need to look at. If we did go to new public works construction, approximately $6 million. No costs have been shown for land acquisition for new construction, thereby assuming that this new facility would be built on city property. If the new public works facility is located on non-city owned land, this expense would need to be added, so. And any use of the city land in the industrial park obviously would eliminate the ability of the city to sell that land to a private business and to pay property taxes, again, which would go into the TIF at that time. So I guess it'd be a pretty concise presentation, but it's obviously something that has been identified for a long period of time, something that the city has logically, methodically worked through our city facilities over a 20-year period and made improvements. And you think about it, this was new construction, but police department was a remodel. Park and Rec Recreation Building was a remodel as well, taking advantage of existing facilities. And what we're trying to do at this point is really compare apples to apples and what our options are. We are looking at this vacant building, as I said, at this point because of its availability. Size wise, square footage wise, it has possibility, whether we can financially make it work, we don't know at this point. So that is something that the council is working on, looking at. Here, I don't know if questions by the council or...
Anybody have any questions? Alright, thanks John. Right now? Okay. Okay, so before we go into close session, what we're going to do is have Brad just present the model, our budget model that we have. It does not include the water and sewer yet, but that is forthcoming. We'll see that in the next, probably at the next meeting. But you will see the general fund model that we have, Brad's going to present to you. And that does assume capital outlay, not only for the public works facility, but for projects that staff has looked at that we would be doing in the next five years or so. So Brad? That's good. Is that the 52nd gyration of our budget model?
It's the 54th. We didn't relabel the last two.
We've had, we've been using this model for...
Long time. Bigger, because some of these numbers are really small. So this is just an update really of looking at the city's capital improvement plan that's currently in place. And then pulling together an example financing plan to fund these capital projects. At the same time, keeping in mind the operational impact of the city's budget. The overall goal that was developed and, or the goal that was, that we were driving for in development of this plan was to maintain a level mill rate throughout the projection period, in this case to 2018 or through, I'm sorry, to 2016 in the budget model. So, and we were able to achieve that. We're maintaining a mill rate that remains at the same level that in 2016 that it was in 2013 while funding all of these projects listed here. And I'll get into the operational side in just a minute. But point out, just as, just as an overview, there's a public works facility here. It's split into two separate financings under this model. A small piece of the financing would take place this year with the rest of the borrowing later next year. And this is under the, so the amount included here is what John referenced is for the acquisition of the existing facility, not for the purchase and development and construction of a new facility. So in addition to that public works facility, there's projects going out in 2014 through 2018. There's projects penciled in here for road construction, streets, equipment, police, library, city hall renovations in 2015 of 575,000, voting machines and some utility and financial software. So with Park and Rec and with the other projects, the roads, streets, equipment, police and library, funding projects each year in 2014 all the way through 2018. So the reason that these additional projects are included is because it's not really reasonable for us to look at just the public works facility and develop a model while ignoring the potential future borrowing needs of the city. We wanted to look at this as a more encompassing so that your future projects, you can gauge the affordability of the future projects at the same time that you're making decisions about your public works facility. There are allocations here, a portion of these projects in 20, or for the public works, a portion would be supported by the water utility and the sewer utility. And then also on the, towards the bottom here, there's some financial software that's allocated between the water sewer and levy supported as well. So to fund this list on the top, this top box, there's a series of financings and a plan that was developed that would have zero tax rate increase, impact. So in the detail of that is listed here, where there's a series of short-term financings, followed by a long-term bonding and then some note issues to fund projects remaining in 15, 17 and 18. So this information then was pulled into the budget model. And this is a minute to turn. And this is the summary output. And I'll go through the, more of the detail, but to sort of look at this from a higher level. This summary shows that I include the historical 2012 data as reference. The budget at 2013 is listed also as a reference point. And then there's projections moving forward 14, 15 and 16. Like any model, one of the weaknesses is the furthest move away from today's actual data, the less confidence we can have in the figures. So in other words, we can be more confident in the 2014 figures than we are in the 2016 figures. That's also one of the reasons that this budget model is only projecting out three years. Going out much more than that, especially given the uncertainty from state and the actions that the state takes in its annual budget, has the model lose some of its value going out much beyond three years. But what we, what this model is showing is that the local taxes increase. But what we, what this model is showing is that the local taxes increase in total by the percent of, this is your growth in your equalized valuation that's projected. So you see that in 13, there's a projection of 1.42%. That would reflect a total tax increase of 1.42%. But remember, converting that to the mill rate means that there's a 0% increase in the mill rate in the city. So then a 2.63 projection in valuation growth in 2014, which translates to just under $3.5 million budget, and then roughly three, or in taxes, roughly $3.5 million in 2016, which is based on a 1.71% valuation growth. The capital outlay is included on here. This is, this capital outlay ties to the funding of the projects that were reviewed on the prior page. And then the levy supported debt service payments, that's the principal and interest that's owed on existing obligations of the city, plus the future, the potential future financings is also included in this model. The assessed valuation is detailed here in dollars, and then, so we can see what your annual mill rate, you'll see that it was $9.90 back in 2012, $9.90 this year, and it's projected to remain at $9.90 under this plan all the way through 2016. This graph represents the total budget, I'm sorry, the total mill rate. I'm sorry, let me back up. This graph represents the total levy, the tax levy of the city, not the total budget. This is the amount of tax levy. So the green portion of the bar would fund operations, and then the bottom, blue half of the bar, or blue portion, is funding principal and interest payments on debt. See the slight increase in total dollars that's collected? And that increase again is, ties to the percentage growth in the city's valuation. And the mill rate as a result remains constant at $9.90 per thousand dollars of valuation. So this gets, this, this is where all the detail is coming from that goes into that summary page that I went over just a minute ago. I just want to point out a couple of things on this. We don't need to go through every single number, but a couple really important things. There's a line item in here for intergovernmental revenues. That's primarily going to be the state shared revenues, funds coming from the state of Wisconsin. That figure is held constant at the same levels that it was in 2013. So for 14, 15, 16, there's no change. Historically, we have seen, the city has seen reductions in state shared revenue because of levy limits put in place through the state's biannual budget. So I did want to point out that assumption. And the other, I think the other highlight that I'd like to point out on here, the fund balance of the city is listed down in this section. And you're able to maintain this constant mill rate without sacrificing fund balance. In other words, you're not balancing the budget here by applying cash on hand to sort of stabilize the tax rate. So, and that's prudent. You wouldn't want to, I wouldn't recommend using that practice because it could lead to, could lead to shortfalls in the future. So in 2014, you're essentially remaining at the same fund balance levels. There's about, it's projected a $227 increase. So for practical purposes, no change from 2013, and modest fund balance increases to the general fund in 15 and 16. So this is a plan that if implemented is a reasonable and prudent plan in terms of the overall management of city finances. Okay, this last page is isolating the debt portion of the, of the model. And these figures also feed into that model. It was best captured, I think, in the summary format. But the reason I bring this up and show this is because the debt we can project out to, in this case, 2037. And the reason we can do that is the debt is going to be a fixed interest rate once it's all issued. So it's reasonable to make projections on what the next four to five years of debt issuance may look like under the current capital financing plan. The debt that the city has on its books right now is fixed rate and fixed payment, so it doesn't change. So I'm much more confident projecting forward debt, debt service payments than I am an operation budget model that has hundreds of variables. So to point out here, that this left-hand side essentially is existing payments of the city, and this includes some of the TIF debt payments that are supported by tax levy in the next couple of years. So this column here, right next to this Baxton area, that's the total debt service mill rate. Doesn't include operations at all, just debt service payments. And what I'd point out is that debt service payments after 2013, that mill rate is scheduled to drop. 2013, the debt service mill rate is $5.49, and it trends downwards from there. This Baxton area represents the principal and interest payments on an annual and total basis, or to fund the projects that were identified in the capital improvement plan. And that's the plan that goes through 2018. This was structured and set up in such a way that the combined debt service, that's the existing, plus the, these new issues, actually tapers off and drops off through 2016, or remains relatively constant, I should say, through 2016. 2016 is important, and you can't really see it up here, but it's important to point out because that's the year where the operational budget model stopped, and because it's just hard to project beyond that. But if you look at this, debt service payments, you can see that the combined debt service remains at roughly the same levels that it had been in 2016. So what that means is if we can, if you have smooth debt service payments after 2016, could ideally balance operations around that. In other words, we're not setting up some sort of a balloon payment or an increase in payments after the operating model stops. We're keeping this level so that it's a reasonable assumption that each year as we update the operating model, we're able to maintain some sort of consistency in the mill rate. So that's what I've got on the financing, or financial impact, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any. Want the detailed one or summary?
Yeah, the detailed one. You guys don't have the handout. I guess I just wanted to point out a couple of things that you see, and Brad brought up the one about the intergovernmental revenues. Of course, that's something that we have to be really careful of because, you know, we're taking into consideration that where revenues will increase because of increase in construction or whatever the case might be, but it's possible that we might lose that if the state decides to continue to lower that. I think it's also important to look at the expenditures there too, where you can see that although our, our capital outlay for our debt and so on is going down, you can see our current expenditures are going up at a percentage of, in 2014, projecting 2.3 in 15 and 16. We are going to have additional monies to be able to spend towards the general fund in this model by still being able to stay at the current mill rate of $9.90, but it isn't a lot. We're looking at about $130,000 more that you'll be able to spend in expenses. And of course, we have to take into consideration that there'll be a cost of living increase, you know, utilities will probably go up, labor costs will also go up, insurances will go up and so on too. So how close we want to get to being, to that number is $130,000, a comfortable situation that we want to be in, knowing that intergovernmental revenues might be, might, they have in the last couple of years, and the difference here is only 130. So that's a big question there. Because our only option is, if, if we can't stay within those constraints, is to increase the levy, which increases the bill. It isn't going to bring it down. But we're going to have to take that into consideration as we look at this. But for what Brad has given us today, it does look like we would be able to finance that as long as everything works out for us. Again, it does limit how much we can give payer increases in the future. It does limit other expenditures that we would be in the normal general fund too. We have to be a little bit careful.
What was the assumed growth rate of our levy?
It was assumed to grow at the same rate as the equalized value in the city. So it ranged from 1.42%. We included some known development that's taking place that in 2015 had it increased 2.63%, and then in 2016, 1.71%. From there going forward, it would drop, we assume it drops back down to 1.42%.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
We do anticipate in public works with the new facility, one new person, staff person, as well as some increased utility costs, and it looks like about $100,000. No, about budgeted, read it, that seems, in 2014, the person hits, I think we budgeted the person in 2015, but you can see some increased public works expenses. I think we projected that, that department to increase 3% in expenses, and the other departments at 2%.
Actually, with utilities, Henry, cost sharing that with water and sewer in the new building would probably be a wash for our current expenditures on utilities.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Brad, thank you.
Okay.
If you want a copy of this budget model, I'm sure you can contact Henry, you guys, anybody that did want to see a hard copy of that. That can be emailed to you. That came in the form of an email. I thought it was in there, but we should be able to.
Yeah, we can put it out there for you.
Can you put it out there?
Yeah, we'll get it out there for you if you want it. Yep.
Right.
Yeah, we couldn't read.
Yeah, that was hard to, even as big as it is, it's still hard to read, yeah. Brad, can you shut that down, please? Thank you. No, I like that. Just my head's in the way now. Okay. All right, we do have a plan to go into closed session again to talk about negotiations. So I would ask that we have a motion to convene into closed session.
Make a motion, we move into closed session.
Second. We have a motion by Lockwood, second by, was it mail? I'm sorry. Olson, sorry. To convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Paren E, as it relates to deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property for a proposed public works facility. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Porczowski.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Shambro.
Aye.
Paul Meele.
Aye.
Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Okay, just this much we could say publicly here. We had made an offer on property, we have a counter offer, and what we are discussing is whether we want to make a counter offer to that offer in closed session, and that's why we are going into closed session.